To order on Monday, September fourteenth here in council chambers. Once again, if you are a citizen wishing to participate in citizens communications, please call Monday, September fourteenth, the day of the meeting, or even prior to that, to seven seven three one 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 one. Ask for Ms. Amanda Rodriguez, or you can email idroodriguez@eaglepasttx.us. And moving on to establishment of quorum, with all members of council being present, moment of reverence for all those brave men and women serving our country to protect our liberties and freedoms, not only overseas but here at home also, and to our first responders who continue to be on the front lines with the COVID-19 pandemic. And for our employee Norberto Beto Rodriguez, who succumbed to complications from COVID-19. Thank you. Moving on to citizens communications, and we do have citizens communications from Morris Lipson Jr. with Eagle Pass Maverick County Economic Development Alliance here from Eagle Pass. Mr. Lipson?
Good afternoon. I want to thank you for allowing me to address you here at your bloodshed workshop. Amanda told me I had about thirty seconds, so I'm not worried. No, she didn't. But I want to also congratulate Councilman Diaz Diaz for his election.
Thank you.
I'm a firm believer that, you know, our younger generation needs to participate in our city government and county government, and they are, of course, the future. And so we have a fine mixture of, I should say, us older people. But let me tell you how, basically, why I'm here, and how it involves your workshop and your budget. We have formed within the last, I gave you a little one pager for you to read, and I won't read it because it's pretty self-explanatory. This is something, I think, very different. It is a marriage of the public sector, the city and the county, with the private sector. And I think that we're still in diapers. We're moving along at a very fast pace. And basically, what I'm here for is, one of the, what we discussed at our initial board meetings, is some seed money. And both the mayor and the judge have discussed it, as we have in the public sector, in the private sector, about the idea is to, through the alliance, to have a coordinator, economic development coordinator, that is going to work together with both the city and the county, and their different departments. What is the idea? The idea is real simple. The idea is that when you come to Eagle Pass and you're an investor, I think we used the word a lot, "No queremos traerte como pelotita." You gotta go to the county, you gotta go over here. And eventually, what happens, a lot of our investors, they get discouraged and they leave. So this is gonna be our red carpet rollout guy, and it's gonna take care of, you know, if you need this, the city, they coordinate it, coordinate, it's sort of like a coordinator, I guess is the best way to put it. And it's, I think, our start to one-stop shopping. And we're trying to also take away the little bit about, you know, pues la ciudad y el condado, and that we may have a little anonymity between some of the departments. I think this will help us. So basically, the county is thirty nine fifty thousand dollars, the city fifty thousand, and of course, I'm saying putting it up has gotta go through you all, and just like, it has to go to commissioner's court, and it has to be budgeted. I sincerely think that those fifty thousand dollars are gonna be well-spent, very, very much so. And of course, everybody's gotta have skin in the game, so the private sector's gonna have members, they're gonna pay membership fees to be part of what we now call the alliance. And I love the name, really, because I think it's a nonprofit corporation, but I think we're, as we go forward, you're gonna be here in the alliance, and the alliance, and I think it's the right name for what we wanna do. So it's pretty self-explanatory. I've come before you for what I firmly believe is gonna be a game changer. And I can tell you, we've got OJ and Jorge are two of the initial board, with myself, Katrina Longoria, Persel Longoria is the other one, along with Noe Rodriguez, and then, of course, we've got the mayor and the judge. And let me just say one thing, that the bylaws of this nonprofit, the only two prominent positions on that board are the standing mayor and judge, which is important, because I think they've always gotta be at the table. So I don't know, if any of you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask them, I mean, to answer them. I just wanted to present it to you, because the mayor made it quite clear that it had to go through the, and the city manager made it quite clear, that it had to go through the budget process. I know times are hard, I really know, I really know, I know you all are having a really hard time, but I think it's something that, the fifty thousand dollars is something that will really be beneficial to us. I firmly believe we're gonna get through COVID, and once we do that, I mean, we're gonna be going full blast. And when we do, we gotta prepare for the legislative session early next year. I'll give you one quick number, and maybe it doesn't pertain, but from Pila Nera, we're pretty well related. Pila Nera lost four hundred, four thousand three hundred jobs from March up to about a month or so, two months ago. They have recovered three thousand nine hundred of those jobs, you know? So that's a good sign. I think Eagle Pass and Pila Nera, we're resilient. We're a little different than other places, because I think we can control our own destiny, and our recovery is going to be a lot quicker than other parts, in other places. So I think we just need to prepare for that. I think this is a great first step. And again, I'm very honored to be the first chairman of the alliance, and will I just come to ask you if you could help us, help us with that? Questions?
Mr. Lipson, the purpose of this is to, is it to hire someone to make it, you said, make it easy for business, for industry to come to Eagle Pass?
This is basically, is to hire somebody through the alliance, it doesn't necessarily report to the city or the county, but is, you know, responding to this board, which is, will have the private sector and the public sector.
If I may, real quick, it's not only just for that, it's just to make everything easier, because you mentioned, one of the things that we hear, and we hear it quite a lot, is no train, no parry, no palo. So this person is kind of the one-stop gel for everything, so it can help all the entities to bridge everything together.
What about, how would the selection process for this individual?
We are asking to get a real rare breed. We have to have somebody that knows construction, somebody that knows some engineering, somebody that knows some marketing, and we can't hire somebody that has no experience. We've got to hire somebody that has really good experiences. And that's why, you know, we're looking at a, at a fairly well-paid job, you know?
It'll be a tough job.
It is, it's gonna be a tough job, because that person has to, to answer to the board, you know, to the alliance, but that person also has to be a people's person, to coordinate all the different departments.
And your intent is to file, sorry, your intent is to files a 501(c)(3)?
I think we're a 501(c)(6), right?
501(c)(6).
501(c)(6). You know about, you know about that stuff. I have a hard time learning that. Very good. So.
And if this, will be for this current budget, the one that we're approving?
Yes, I believe so. We really need to get this thing really going, and like, we've got a lot of preparation to do for the next legislative session. We are not getting our share of the funds that we need, you know, to do the infrastructure that we need.
I think one of the things that we're trying to do is to bring the private sector to help out as well, because they've been kind of, kind of on the outside. This group is, the reasons to bridge that and bring them together.
We all agree that, I mean, like I keep saying, we gotta have skin in the game.
Right.
The private sector also has to, to, you know, we gotta carry our own weight, okay? So, and then we've got some young people like OJ too.
Yeah, if I may address the council. Predominantly, we are very excited at the way that the alliance is headed, more from a timing perspective. Eagle Pass finds itself at the precipice of an extremely important pivot point. We know what challenges and what competition we find as a border city, from Laredo, Del Rio, up to El Paso, down to Brownsville. As the benchmark, the Microstar deal, one of the issues, like my co-executive, or excuse me, chairman, board members mentioned, one of the major issues that I had in dealing with this project was kind of jumping from one end to the another. Everything was possible, and it was a matter of going to the right entities and asking the right questions. That's really what made this project completely feasible, successful. Now, again, during that meantime, it was myself and the team that brought this together, competing against Oreo, competing against San Antonio, competing against Laredo. Laredo, at this point in time, is saturated. I think it's a very important pivot point for Eagle Pass and Maverick County, for us to attract both commercial, residential, but more important industrial development. So this, this alliance is perfectly suited, at this point in time, to serve as a jumping off point. I know, at this point in time, it is difficult, given the financial restrictions we find each other, but this is really going to plant the seed that we will see benefits here in the next three to five years, as we look to become much more industrial-driven as a, as a micro economy.
Well, thank, we thank you again, and I know we kinda broke the rules, we, a bunch of people, but we wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of what's going on. And again, please, we're gonna need all of your support, you know?
You asked for seed money, can you tell me exactly how the money would be utilized?
There will be fifty thousand, fifty thousand will make a hundred. The membership will probably, we have fifty members, we'll probably have another twenty-five thousand there, so we're looking at one twenty-five. You know, we'll probably have some, we're talking to some of the entities, maybe coming up with some money also. So we figure, we're gonna have to get a really, well, we still have to find the qualifications of the person we're gonna pay, we start, we gotta do our website, we've gotta do, and, this person, we're gonna have to send them, I mean, we're gonna have to send them places. And we need a first-year budget, we calculated about, maybe about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we talked about the first year. So, you know, the other point that's very important, and this is, put yourself in the person, if we're trying to get a person to come, of an organization that's just starting, and if they don't see any financial backing, any seed money, well, we're not gonna get a very good person. I mean, we're not gonna get what we want. So basically, that's the answer to your question.
Adding on to that, one of the things that I think is extremely important, when we look at the fact that this is an intergovernmental organization, the county has, you know, also committed significant resources to be able to help this alliance get its, you know, foot up in the door, as well as possibly housing the employee, as well as everything that would be regarding the day-to-day expenses. So the county has been more than willing to help us get this on the ground, so off the ground.
We'll also discuss, discuss the situation with the incubator that you all have talked about, maybe over here at the old Riskin' Building. So, I mean, we're trying to put it all together, somehow, some way, and, you know, we really, I think we shouldn't really care where it's coming from, as long as it's coming from the county or the city, and then we're doing it all together.
We have Mr. Marquez, our economic developer, so this person would work hand-in-hand?
Yeah, let me tell you, let me just say this much, and for Mr. Marquez, he has been extremely helpful.
Yes.
Because when I started, we started putting this thing together, we kinda went to his expertise as to, hey, get us, get us copies of bylaws, get us copies of how we set this up. You remember, he comes from working with the county, which is the county of El Paso, if I'm not wrong, and unlike here, where we have one city and one county, the county of El Paso has a bunch of cities and one county. So he was involved and had that experience as to inter-local and intergovernmental experience and the agreements that are worked out, to all heading toward in the same direction for one economic development of the region. So I do wanna say that, that his, his participation has been real, real valuable to us, as far as, you know, feeding us material research and everything, and so he will be an integral part of this.
Good.
And we got, we got things, you know, spaces to fill and everything, like the county, for example, doesn't have that position. So we're trying here to bring it all together. And I'll be honest, what we envision the alliance to be is, hey, like the, I guess it's gonna sound kinda weird, but like the watchdog, we're the watchdog that we keep all of us at the table, private sector, city, county, and investors. I'll finish up by saying this, the worst thing that could happen to us, and maybe has happened in the past, is we get somebody that wants to invest, and they contact somebody in here. And whoever gets them, whether it's a Realtor or a developer, keeps that person to himself and doesn't say nothing, doesn't say nothing, because, and we're not thinking about the common good. When it ends up happening, if that investor with that person doesn't find what he needs, he'll off. And we need to have, the alliance's main job is gonna be, hey, you're here, you need land, this guy has land, that guy has land, that guy has land. Go talk to him, go get yourself your best deal. We're not gonna care where the development of the county comes, you know, in southern Maverick County, or to the north of Maverick County, we just wanna keep it here in Eagle Pass and Maverick County. It's the same way with services.
So that person's gonna do the job of everybody else, try to bring us together, everybody's still their own entity, so if I need something from the city, we'll come to the city, or like that, but it's a lot easier, because we all have our different rules, and let me tell you, sometimes it's confusing.
Let me tell you, I've talked to investors that have never met the mayor, and have never met the judge, or had never met any of the city council, and I think that's terrible.
Yes.
I think, as an investor, if I go into a town, and I meet the mayor, and I meet the city councilor, or the city councilwoman, or I meet the county judge, it means something to me. You know, I feel like somebody's rolling out the red carpet to me, and I think we need to do more of that, together. So, I don't know. I think I took more than my allotted time.
No, but you explained pretty well, pretty good. I think we all, we've all heard of investors that have done it for one reason, for many years already. It's not, you know, it's, they've come, checked, they don't get what they need, and they, you know, because they don't get that customer service that they deserve. So, I mean, yeah, I get what you're, the purpose of it, and it's, I like it.
Well, thank you, and if there's no more questions, we'd appreciate your help, and see if somewhere in your budget, you might be able to find the funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the workshop. Jesse, discussion of this, item number one, discussion of the City of Eagle Pass budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and possible action on directive to city administration regarding saying. We started on page one?
Go through the presentation, yeah. So, good afternoon, mayor and council. You should all have a copy of the presentation in front of you, and also, just in case, we're, I'm not gonna go into detail on this, but just in case we do have questions, you don't have a copy of your proposed budget, we do have copies here. So what I wanted to do today.
Does everybody have a copy of that? The proposed budget, the big book?
Yes.
So what my plan today, and, you know, we can steer this conversation in any way that the council would desire. My plan is to introduce Councilman Diaz into basically a rundown. It's a little difficult, because we're kind of cramming three months' worth of workshops and meetings into one meeting, but just, you know, to catch up to speed where we're at, go through the highlights. I'm gonna try to keep that as brief as possible. So going through our calendar, so the calendar here starts in June twenty-six, when we had our first budget workshop, but it actually starts a lot sooner than that. In April, we have our departments enter their requests, finance and administrations review those requests, and then we start going through our process. So we're almost down to September fifteenth, which is the expected date of adoption of our, of our budget and our property tax rate, so we hopefully will take care of that tomorrow. So this slide here summarizes where our budget is as a whole, across all of the city's funds. And when we talk about funds, I really need to clarify why we have funds. So why don't we just have one big account, and everything's all mixed together? Well, there's laws requiring us to do it, but the laws are there for transparency purposes. So each one of these funds exists, because there's a federal law, there's a state law, or there's a city council ordinance telling us, keep this money separate. That applies to every fund, except the general fund, which is why it's called the general fund. And so the general fund is where we tend to pay most attention, because that's the largest fund, and that's where most departments operate out of. So on that first column, we do have our reserves, and so the reserves are basically the savings, savings that has built up over the years, and in some cases, like the general fund is required to be held for security purposes, you know, just in case of a public calamity disaster, we have funding to continue. Then we have our revenues listed there, our operating expenses, our capital expenditures, our transfers in and out, the net of those two, and then our net change. And that's the column that I focus on a lot, because that tells you, is our budget balanced or is it not? And general fund is required to be balanced, so you see a net change of zero there, and then the ending, the projected ending fund balance. So where does our money come from? So most of our money does come from charges for services. So the two main components of this is our international bridge system and our solid waste collection. So just over half of the almost thirty-seven million dollar budget will come from charges for services. Then you see about a quarter come from property taxes, thirteen percent from sales taxes, other taxes, five percent, and then several other fees that make up the rest. Our expenditures, about a third goes towards public safety, nine percent for infrastructure, eleven for health and sanitation, nine for parks and recreation, fifteen for debt service, five percent for the operations of the international bridge, two percent for educational services, and then, which is the library, and the other governmental services, which are the administrative offices. So going over the budget for the general fund. So the general fund, again, is balanced, we have all of our revenue sources listed there, and you'll see the biggest decline in the revenues is in the international bridge transfer. So in fiscal year 2019, we were projecting just over twelve million, and now the proposed budget is just under ten million. So that's over two million dollar loss in revenue, expected for the upcoming year. Again, I do need to reiterate that that estimates, that presumes that the bridge will open once again by November thirtieth, but we did talk at the last meeting about our contingencies, if that does not happen.
Hopefully on Monday.
Hopefully.
This Monday?
Yeah, it's supposed to be the twenty-first.
And we haven't heard anything, right? Correct?
Oh, yeah. Probably hear something on Wednesday, tomorrow, Thursday.
Fingers crossed. And then we have our expenditures, you'll see that the biggest is personnel, and then we have, the next largest is transfers out. So the general fund is required to transfer out over three million dollars to other funds, because they do not make enough money to operate on their own. And those include things like the public library, the ICT, our Main Street program. So when we started this conversation, when departments submitted all of their requests, we were short six point eight million dollars. And so these are the steps that were taken to, to balance the budget at that time. So we proposed this transition to self-funded health insurance, the decrease to contributions to others, we proposed temporary hiring freezes, and by that we mean, when vacancies occur, hold those positions for a certain period of time in order to accumulate savings. We did, at the time, we had estimated that the bridge would open in January, so by moving that to November, that estimate, that brings in additional one point one million dollars with that estimate. Other revenue estimates, like sales tax, we were very fortunate that sales tax did rebound very quickly. In April, we saw a twenty percent decrease in sales tax revenue. In May, it was just a two percent decrease, in June, a one percent decrease, a one percent decrease in July. And so we're basically at where we were pre-COVID, when it came to sales tax. The big concern when we're talking about sales tax is that the stimulus was active during that point, and so we really haven't seen the period post-stimulus. So we will see that in this upcoming month, to see what happens to that trend. But at that point, with that twenty percent decrease, we had to decrease our revenue significantly, since we saw that rebound, we were able to increase our revenues at that point. We do have a reduction in capital improvement projects, so that, we had talked about the roof and HVAC improvements here at City Hall and the multipurpose, we talked about the hike and bike trail, and we talked about the Riskin' Building, how we were gonna have to start chipping away at those funding sources. And then we decreased transfers to the library, to the bridge reserve, solid waste into streets and sidewalks. And we were able to do that, because those funds had built up reserves on their own, and so, you know, unfortunately, we all, all the funds have to share in the burden that the city is facing. And then departments voluntarily cut, in most cases voluntarily cut, we came to an agreement, two point two million dollars. So that's how we ended up with a balanced budget. So just going over briefly our international bridge system, so you'll see that the revenues, the toll fees for bridge system in 2019 were fourteen million, just over fourteen million dollars, and now we're proposing just over eleven and a half. So again, it's over two million dollar, two point seven million dollar decrease. The expenditures within the bridge system remain constant, we still are fully funding the bridge system, we just have to deal with that deficit that we unfortunately, that the general fund will have to deal with. And you see that in transfers out, previously twelve million, now nine point eight million. And then the next, a large fund that we have is the environmental and solid waste, and so environmental and solid waste accounts for our recycling, our trash pickup, our landfill, and our property cleaning divisions. And so we do have just over five million dollars in revenue for this fund. You'll see that the largest item here is personnel, and the second item, largest item, is contracts, at just over one and a half million, and that's because we have to pay the disposal fees at the Maverick County landfill, so that makes up most of that, that expense. And then we do have a very large investment into capital equipment, you see there, under capital outlay, and just under a million dollars in capital equipment, across all of those divisions within the solid waste department. The last major fund is the debt service, so the city does have debt that we need to pay off on a yearly basis, and so the city assesses property taxes. Part of that property tax goes to the general fund, another part goes to the debt fund. This is showing what goes to the debt fund. So you'll see property tax revenue of three point two million dollars, and then you see various transfers in from other funds. So you have a transfer from the ICT center, from the storm drainage, and from the general fund. And so these transfers are, is every fund contributing their portion of that debt, so that the taxpayers don't have to brunt the full burden of the city's debt. And they're the ones who benefited from those projects, those funds. So you see that's the income, and then you see the principal and interest payments at the bottom, so the total is five point six million dollars in debt payments for the year. Now, these are our special revenue funds. So special revenue funds, again, these are funds that are separated out, because the law, or federal law, state law, or local policy is telling us to. So we have items like the room tax fund, that are collected through our hotels, the public library, which is partially funded through grants, the auto burglary theft prevention grant, which has a new name now, and I do not recall what it is, but it's for auto theft purposes. We have the high intensity drug trafficking area grant, we have a recreational programs fund, which accounts for all of the summer programs, all of the leagues, all of the revenue that the families pay into participating in those leagues, goes into that, and that pays for the salaries and pays for all the necessary materials and supplies to run those leagues. We have Parkland Dedication, which is the fund that builders and developers pay. Money is collected when permits are issued, and this is to improve our, our community parks. We have our Main Street program, which is in charge of beautifying downtown, our municipal court restricted fund, which revenues are collected from, from traffic fines. We have our convention center and tourism fund. We have our, our public education and governmental access fund, which is a tax, basically that is paid for by Time Warner in order to support our, our TV channel. We have our storm drainage fund that, that's a five dollar fee that comes out on everybody's water bill. We have the Streets and Sidewalks Fund, and then we have our debt service fund, which we just discussed. So, again, I don't plan on going too much in detail unless you guys, unless you all have a specific question. But I did wanna just wrap up with just the highlights. And we did talk about contributions, and, and we'll get to that discussion shortly, but just to show where contributions stand. So, these were all the entities that did receive money the previous year. Now, the only ones that stand in the current proposed budget to receive funding are the Maverick County Nutrition Center, the VITA program, and the Eagle Pass Youth Association, formerly the Boys and Girls Club. Now, so, just to go through the highlights. So, the general fund is balanced. The property tax rate is equal to the previous year. So, there is no tax increase. We have the self, the transition to self-funded health insurance. There are no pay adjustments included, and it does not include longevity pay for non-public safety employees. State law does require us to pay firefighters and, and police officers longevity pay. The city council has an ordinance that says if funding is available, all other employees can receive it as well. So, since this budget is a little tight, again, it's one of the things that, things that we might revisit i- in the near future. We do have over one point six million dollars in capital equipment. And then for personnel, we have the addition of one FTE removal, five upgrade of eight, and the transfer of the custodial services department to the parks department, and the consolidation of all the security personnel under the police department. And then some funding considerations that, significant funding considerations that have been included are the economic development master plan, which is included for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then the proposed contract management for the safety complex, oh, sorry, sports complex, two hundred thousand dollars. And so, this just summarizes, the last, second to the last slide. So, this just summarizes the personnel changes. So, we do have, we talked about the last meeting, the addition of one IT workstation specialist. We do have the removal of those five positions. So, there's one that's different from this, from last week. So, administration has proposed removing one of their administrative assistants. And so, that will result in some savings i- in the budget, and I'll go over that on the next slide. Then we do have the custodial services moving to the parks department, as we discussed last meeting. And then we do have the addition of that last item there, which is the, the reclassification of one public works supervisor to a public works maintenance specialist four. So, this is that first sheet again that we discussed. And so, you'll see that under the net change item, there's a number of forty-eight thousand one eighty-four, and that's as a result of the cut that administration made. Again, nobody lost their job. It was just a removal of position. Person was shifted to other responsibilities. So, the position's just being removed from the budget, but that results in some savings. So, there's some savings of forty-eight thousand one eighty-seven as of right now. All the other funds remain the same.
So, that administrative assistant from, from administration, was that, did that person resign or something, or?
No, they moved to another department. Yes. So, I did want to discuss some other items relating to contracted services, two in particular. One is the IT management service, and the other is a park maintenance service. Both of them are contract, contracted out services. However, because there are personnel matters and legal considerations, I do recommend those go into executive session. But if anybody has any questions or anything concerning the budget, we can discuss them now, we can discuss them after executive session. We can handle it, anyway.
Be- I don't, I mean, whatever council's wishes are, I'm fine with. But before we do so, on that economic development master plan, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand, can you refresh my memory as to what that allowance is for?
I don't know if Mr. Arturo is on the call.
Or the two hundred also?
Yes, I wanna hear about those two hundred thousand dollars for the.
On the economic development master plan, that just coincides with the other master plans. What are we doing in terms of, where are we gonna have industrial zoning, business on, and there he comes, but.
I think he wasn't, yeah, I think.
It falls in line with all the other master plans. First, the overall master plan of the community, the parks master plan, the waterworks master plan, trying to get everything coordinated. So, I'll let him take over.
Sorry, I apologize. I just ran down the hallway, so.
Sorry.
A little bit out of breath. Yeah, so, the master plan essentially, if, if you guys can recall, is to kinda bring together what we're gonna shoot after. So, we wanna have a specific goal, specifically when it's, when we're talking about sectors. What kind of sectors the city wants to target, whether it's medical, whether it's IT, whether it's industrial. So, the master plan, what it does is that it, excuse me, sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
I know, right?
Take your breath.
No, I'm good, I'm good, thank you. The master plan, what it does is that we're able to look at the, the, the community and see the potential that's, that's there to be able to make that determination as a community and be able to, to go after specific industries.
Okay, so.
The reason I'm asking is because, I mean, you know, I mean, we just had a presentation in the alliance, and I think it's a very viable thought. But I mean, I wanna make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and we're not also, I mean.
No, if, if anything that.
That we're trumping each other.
Yeah, no, if anything, it would work in conjunction with, if, if the alliance, you know, solidifies into a, 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 an organization. What it is, again, we take all the EDOs, which are the Economic Development Organization, whether it's Texas Warfare Commission, whether it's S P D C, whether it's the city, if the county, if they ever become, or if they ever create an Economic Development Department. What this plan does is it helps us, guide us, all of us as EDOs to target a, a specific sector. So, not only that, but it, it gives us guidance into, you know, what it is that we need, how do we develop our workforce? How do we develop programs that are gonna be economic development target, uh, guided, I should say?
Wait a second, I'm sorry. I've got another question.
Well, no, no, I was just gonna say exactly what you said, you know, I just want, don't wanna duplicate efforts.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like, you know, we have all these goals and everything, but when are they gonna come to?
Materialize?
Yes, uh-huh. I mean, I, I, you know, I just, a little bit of this here, 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 and when does it come together, you know? Because, and I know it's hard right now, I, I mean, I understand, you know, that the, just going through the hard time, but.
Sure.
A hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, so I just.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, I'm sorry?
Correct, yes, one twenty-five.
Okay.
What is the breakdown of how that's gonna be spent?
So, typically, the way it works is that we go out for bid for, for an organization to do an analysis of, of our community. And what they do is they, they do a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Through that analysis, they generate, again, an understanding of, of our community. Where are we going as far as what's, what's our, what's our, what's our ni- niche? You know, as a community here in Eagle Pass, what, what can we use that's to our advantage, whether it's the, where, where we are, where we are based geographically, you know, as far as our workforce, what's the benefit of our workforce? Do we have a, a young workforce? Do we have a, you know, aging workforce and all that stuff to make a determination, to make a plan? So, the, the master plan, what it does is creates a five to ten-year plan, and it creates goals to, for us to achieve those. The way it's broken down.
Is this master plan for city only? Because we're gonna be working in conjunction with other entities, then we need to make sure, like the alliance, for example, you know, they're, they're dipping from here and from here and from here, you know? We need to make sure that we're doing the same if all of us are gonna benefit from this.
Absolutely, no, we can, we can actually, and it, it would benefit us if, if we go outside of our just.
We haven't done that.
No, no, we haven't done this. This is, this is just an item to, right, to request the funding. But, I mean, I, I think you, you hit it right on the head, I mean, if anything.
Well, I just see a lot of, you know, working together, and, and I like it, you know? But, you know, we also need to understand that pretty soon the city taxpayers are gonna start asking, hey, everybody else is spending, I mean, it's just like, guys, I don't want anybody else spending my money.
Maybe you could split it like the alliance, sixty and sixty.
You know? I mean, is this something that's only gonna be city, or is this?
Uh, well, ideally, it would be best if, if it was a regional approach. Again, because when we're, when we're reaching out to the community, or not the community, but the businesses, what we're doing as a city is that we're basing our numbers based on the city limits. Now, of course, when these, these businesses look at it into our region, most of them have a threshold of population. There's a saying that retail follows households. So, of course, when you're looking at us as a region, thirty thousand in population does not seem or sound as good as fifty thousand in population. So, when we're talking about doing, creating a master plan, of course, it benefits us to, to look at it on a, on a regional basis, you know? That way, whenever we have, again, a master plan that we can show to people, we can look at it in terms of numbers as a region rather than just city walls.
Uh, the thing, one of the things that we've done in the annexations of up to four eighty or outside of four eighty, that we increased really our ETJ in those areas to be able to incorporate more of the county land and the outside the city limits for such a project. But how, how are you gonna use the Buxton study and retail culture? Are we gonna be using that information in there as well?
So, we currently are, and we currently are using Buxton. Buxton, what it is, it's a, it's a retail market study. And it's something that we acquired about a month ago. Buxton, what it does is it gives us data on the leakage. So, essentially what it is, is that they collect data from credit cards, specifically from, from people from Eagle Pass, and they make a determination on, on where they're spending their money. So, if people from Eagle Pass are going out to San Antonio to buy purchases or buy goods, the credit card gets recorded. So, we then collect that data and make a determination that there's a leakage. What it is, is that, you know, say, for example, you know, we take a group of ten people, two out, two out of those people are spending, you know, let's say twenty dollars in San Antonio, spending on, you know, buying new clothes or anything like that. We get a report back saying that, hey, Eagle Pass, you're missing twenty dollars out of your population, and they're spending the, on this. So, what they do, once we have that report, we generate a list of potential businesses that we can recruit. Now, this was about a month ago. We started the recruitment process about a month ago. So, what we do is we, we contact these companies and we ask them, you know, if, if they're interested in, in, in hearing about Eagle Pass. And from there, what we do is if they say yes, we, we give them additional information and try to hook them into, looking into Eagle Pass for further expansion. And this is something that's already ongoing.
Now, in the past, we've used UTSA for such studies. Is there any universities, UTSA included, that we can look at, that we can partner off? Cause that was a part of a type of a grant type thing.
So, for UTSA, when it comes to retail studies, I prefer to stick, stick with the private sector simply because they, they collect more specific data on consumer, consumer spending. When it comes to four-year, or, yeah, four-year institutions or universities, they better serve for, you know, something like population growth, policy analysis, and stuff like that. But when it comes to like retail stuff and, and, and commercial trends, I prefer to stick to the, to the private sector with that.
And who's a, are you the person in charge of actually contacting these possible businesses, companies?
Yeah, so, so, again, with, with the staff that I have on, on board, Ms. Adestada Mendoza is the one that has been contacting these, these entities. And she's been doing that on a, on a daily basis.
Do you have any point feel that you're stretching yourself to, you know?
Well.
I mean, because I don't wanna, you know, we're trying to do all this and we can't, we don't finish one, you know?
Right, right. That's, that's a, that's a fair question, that's a very fair question. I think with, with it being a small town, I think that we have to wear a lot of hats. I think this goes along with any and all departments. I think when it comes to economic development, you know, as far as, you know, the recruitment process, business retention, expansion, looking at workforce, and doing all these things, there is a lot of work that needs to be done, which is good and bad. Good is that, you know, we finally, or, you know, the city finally has the staff to do it. We're, we're working on our website, we're working on business recruitment, we're trying to work, you know, with, with workforce development. Are we stretching ourselves to a thing? I don't think so at this point, but I think once we do reach that point, I will, I will approach admin to request additional staff. But right now, I wanna make sure that our staff gets trained to make sure that, that they're able and capable of doing the things that, that we need to do. There's a lot of things that go into economic development besides just, you know, reaching out to businesses. There's policy analysis, there's other stuff that I wanna make sure that our staff fully understands and fully knows how they do before we move on to bigger, better things. With the alliance suggesting or requesting funding, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea, simply because if, if they become the, the recruitment arm of the region, I think that's beneficial to everybody. When you're talking about, you know, whether we're duplicating efforts, I don't think so. And I don't think there should be just one economic development agency. I think it's fair to say that if we have multiple ones specializing in specific things, I think that's great. So, to the, to answer your question shortly, I, I don't think we're stretching ourselves to a thing just yet, but I, I will notify administration if we do.
You mentioned this was a regional effort? Did you mean like Eagle Pass and Maverick County, or are you looking at neighboring counties as well?
Uh, for which one, for which effort?
For your, your, your plan.
The, the master plan? Oh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, can, can you repeat the question?
You mentioned, so you said that this would be regional, right?
Yes.
Did you mean it would be collaborative between Eagle Pass and Maverick County? Or are you thinking about including like Salala County, Dimmitt County, the neighboring region?
Yeah, no, usually the, the way it works is that we wanna keep it consistent to what's called an, an MSA, which is probably a statistical area. When we stretch ourselves in, in that sense, that would be stretching a little bit too far, and we wouldn't necessarily get the data that we need. For that, if, if that were to be an approach that we wanted to take as a region, as a real grand council of government, oh, I'm sorry, as a real grand region, then the real grand council of governments would be the best approach at that sense. Yeah, and, and in that point, then we can start looking at different counties and different cities outside of that, that region.
Any other questions, Arturo?
No, not me.
Thank you. For Jesse, or do you all wanna take those items?
For Jesse, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we need to take all the items in executive session, if we can, if we not, I mean, I spoke to him earlier about the ones that I would like.
I think there's two positions.
To hear more about.
Right? What were the items you were suggesting for executive session?
Yeah, for the contracted services, for the park maintenance.
But I don't know if I have one on the other one.
I wanted to discuss a little bit about Mr. Libson's presentation. I think.
And, and I wanna discuss the contributions to others. I, I mentioned that to you.
Yeah.
So, so what are we doing? I don't know.
You have the motion to go into executive session.
Well, let's do that, and then we can come back and discuss anything else.
Is there, is there a motion to executive session?
Second.
Motion to go into executive session, for section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with.
And personnel zero seven four.
Consultation with attorneys, contracts for the budget. I'm sorry, this thing tore off, so I'm trying to tighten up.
You can use that.
I gotta use.
I have a new one, you wanna? I always think it's fair, cause it's always, but maybe you shouldn't give it away.
Yeah, some of these don't.
Maybe you shouldn't give it away.
You got some from Langley and Manat?
Is this a conflict of interest to where this?
We got some from Langley and Manat because we haven't gotten any from, como se ma ahora?
Hey! I'm getting them printed. Better quality.
So, is it a motion, the second, to take this item into executive session, in consultation with attorneys? With the record reflect, we went to executive session at six thirty-five PM on Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Did I say it right?
Yes, and zero seven four.
And zero seven four. Executive session, you know?
Thank you so much.
Boy, we're too relaxed today. Okay, go get some. City council came out of the executive session at eight ten PM on September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and going off to the, continuing with the budget discussion on the items pending, anything else that we're gonna discuss? Did anybody else have any other questions for Jesse? Or we're going straight to the direction that we want them to go?
As far as the, the presentation by the economic alliance, I would like to make a motion.
As far as the presentation by the Economic Alliance, I would like to make a motion
to authorize administration to allocate $125,000 for economic development purposes. And these funds will be used to support the Economic Development Alliance and also the master plan study. Both of these will be subject to the participation of the county.
Of their entities or other entities.
Or other entities.
Okay, so do we make a motion or we?
Yeah, that was his motion.
I mean, do we second and take vote and then?
The motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Diaz. Any further discussion on that? So just to clarify, we're going to put that 125 towards the Economic Development Alliance and continuing with the study on the Economic Development Master Plan and also contingent on the other entities participating because this is going to be beneficial to the community as a whole, not just the city. So there's a motion and a second. Any further question, question?
No, no, I was voting.
All those, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, that's one action and there was another.
Okay, and the contribution to other entities, I would like to make a motion to approve the district attorney's request for funding in the amount of 38,000 contingent to funds becoming available to the city. In addition, the city is open to increasing the funding to the DA's office to the full amount request of 60,000 if the funds become available at mid-year.
So there's a motion by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. I think we're done, right? Jess, you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Are we ready for tomorrow, Jess? Tomorrow's a big day.
I hope we're ready for tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a big day. We'll have everything on there.
No pressure, if we don't adopt a budget, government closes.
And the beautiful thing again about adopting the budget, no tax rate increase. Say that again.
Say it again for the people.
No tax rate increase.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn by Councilman Salinas, second by Mayor Pro Tim Davis. All those in favor, unanimous. Meeting adjourned at 8:13 PM on September 14th, 2020.